Capron.
Here.
Redkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Can we stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands." The Iowa Mission of Mercy people will join me on behalf of please.
Iowa Mission of Mercy.
Whereas the health care is critical to an individual's, oral health care is critical to an individual's oral health and access to dental care has become increasingly challenging for many Iowans and whereas for those with low income and without health or dental coverage the problem is compounded significantly. And whereas on October 5th and 6th, the Tyson Event Center in Sioux City will be transformed into a mobile dental clinic where hundreds of volunteers including dentists, dental hygienists, dental assistants, dental suppliers. Iowa Mission of Mercy demonstrates Iowa's commitment to provide access to dental care and information on preventing care for healthier Iowa. Now therefore I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, on behalf of the City Council, will hereby proclaim on October 1st through the 6th, 2018, as Iowa Mission of Mercy Week in Sioux City. And in behalf of everyone in our community, we thank the volunteer professionals and the Iowa Dental Foundation for their service to the citizens of Siouxland. I've had the opportunity of to observe this capacity as an outstanding program to undertake and bring it back to Sioux City as a community work.
We're just really happy to be able to be back here in Sioux City to do this again. We got a lot of help the first time we did it and none of that has decreased. We've had terrific cooperation from the city and from the people at the Tyson. We've had a lot of volunteers sign up from the community and people have been very gracious in donating materials to us and food so that we can feed our volunteers. Thank you, Sioux City.
Thank you. Margaret, you want to bring your group up? We have a proclamation that reads, "Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, income levels, lifestyles, and sexes and in fact is probably affecting someone you know. And whereas one in three women will be a victim of violence in her lifetime, domestic violence violates an individual's human rights by destroying dignity, security, self-worth due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. Whereas in Siouxland, the Council on Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence is available 24 hours a day and last year responded nearly 2,000 survivors provided 11,026 nights of shelter, 400 to 413 adults and 305 children fleeing domestic abuse. Despite high census, no one is in an unsafe situation was turned away. Whereas the impact of domestic violence affects all the members of the community and only a coordinated community response will put it stop is atrocious crime and assured funding is continuously available to provide these life-saving services. Now therefore I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, will hereby proclaim, "The month of October 2018 is Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Sioux City and urge all our citizens to actively participate in scheduled events and programs and to think about the fact that someone is someone you know." I want to thank you first of all for your organization, but thank you for a lifetime of service to this organization. I got a note that you'll be retiring and you will be missed, so thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Say a few words.
You know what, domestic violence can happen to anyone. Your daughter, your mother, your coworker, it really is someone you know. And our services are available 24/7, around the clock. We have people available to respond to people at the hospital in the mornings for protection orders. Really, our services are very well utilized and it does not, the crimes of domestic violence do not seem to be decreasing. So the little card I gave you, I just want you to keep that so that you know how to respond to someone who may talk to you about domestic violence. Support them, give them our phone number and tell them help is available and that what's happened to them is not their fault. Thank you again for all your support and I guess that's it.
Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the consent agenda which today is items 2 through 11C. Consider them to pass unless a separate roll call vote is asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on one, please come up as I read it, state your name and address so it can be entered into the record. The same is if you want to speak on item, not under the agenda, come up under Citizens' Concerns, but again, we'll need your name and address. I move the consent agenda. Two is the reading of the City Council minutes of September 24th and 26th, 2018. I need to abstain on code. Five is the resolution adopting plans and specifications for the wastewater treatment, de-watering, and odor control improvements Phase One project. Six are council policy updates. A is the res- seven, for the Gordon Drive signal replacement project. C is the resolution approved program. Nine is the purchasing. A is the resolution awarding a purchase order to Thomas Bus Sales for 176-inch wheelbase light duty ADA compliant bus for the transit system. B is the resolution awarding a purchase order to Kinefla Chevrolet for five 2019 Chevrolet 1500 four-wheel drive pickups. We need to amend item C, it should read, "Resolution awarding a purchase order to Wesco Distribution for 170 LED light fixtures." And I'll move that amendment. Second.
Redkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
D is awarding a service provider agreement to Kavanaugh Del Electric to install 170 LED fixtures. Ten are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list and come forward if you have questions. Eleven are receipt of minutes, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, if so, please come forward now.
Mayor, I need to abstain on 10, 2A, the Briar Cliff University, application for conflict of interest. And I should abstain also on item two, the minutes of both meetings.
Who you need?
Rhonda, did you vote?
I did, I'm still using the one to my right.
Correct, just put a little sticky note there.
Okay. Oh, Pete, vote here.
Thank you.
No, I'll get it.
Glad you got here today, Pete.
No, Cal?
Popping up for you?
No.
It passed 5 to nothing.
Passed 5 to 0. We going to?
I'll call it.
Roll call. Twelve is a hearing resolution approving plans and specs for the south perimeter fence construction projects through Gateway Airport, I'll move that.
Second. Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Redkin.
Aye.
Will we ever be done building fence or is this a lifetime for car dust, always get to build? Seriously, we build fence and we build fence and we build fence and it looks pretty good to me, but yet you rebuild it.
Yeah, this, Mike Colet, Assistant City Manager. So we had a pre-bid meeting today, so this will be in conjunction with, we have to move the perimeter road with the runway replacement project, so that's why this fence is specifically needed, so it's got another purpose.
So if we keep moving and expanding, we'll build more fence?
Thirteen is a hearing resolution approving plans and specs for the Skywalk project, I'll move that.
Second. Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Redkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Fourteen is a hearing resolution approving the sale of property at 2016 Nebraska Street in the vacant station near the Sioux City Public School District. I don't think I'll move that one.
Second.
He didn't move.
Oh, you're not going to move that one? Oh, gosh.
I'll move it.
Second. Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Redkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Abstain conflict of interest?
Scott.
No. Fifteen is an ordinance amending chapter 10.12 of municipal code to clarify the default process for the automated traffic enforcement program, I'll move first reading.
Second.
Mayor and Council, this is amendment to both the red light and the speed camera portions for the automatic traffic enforcement code. Essentially, right now, those that do nothing in response to a citation are waived into collections essentially. The proposed amendment would have a municipal infraction issued for non responsiveness and then it would move into the court system for determination and collection if there still is no response to the citation at that point.
Thank you.
Capron.
Aye.
Redkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to waiving statute of rule?
No.
No, I'll move that.
Second.
Redkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Second and third. Sixteen is a resolution approving a contract to W- Well, second, a second. I'm sorry, we gotta, yeah, now we gotta vote on that.
It's like, that one quick.
Wait, a second.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Redkin.
Aye.
Sixteen is a resolution approving a contract to WA Clinger for the Hard Rock Casino in Tyson Event Center parking garage, I'll move that.
Second.
Rhonda?
Yeah. I have a little difficulty on this one. We've been dealing with Spectra since January, we've been promised events, we haven't gotten events, and we have been also visiting with Hard Rock to get events and they have worked together, evidently they say they've talked to each other, but talk is cheap if we don't have any events. And we're talking a parking lot, a $10 million parking lot. Now, we will be splitting the parking lot, obviously, or if we need it for the Tyson Event Center, then we have people that can come over to Hard Rock Parking Lot. That's all fine and dandy, but we don't have any, and we have nothing scheduled, as far as I can tell, with Tyson's Event Center. And to me, if we're gonna be splitting this $10 million with Hard Rock, where's the people that are gonna be seen in this hotel? That's where I'm at. So if you want to come up and tell me what's going on, I mean, do we have any events scheduled? Is there anything happening? And have you talked to Hard Rock? Because I know that you two, you visited, but to me, talk is cheap. You know what, I want to see some events.
Yep, Rick Powell, Director of Operations, Tyson Event Center. I can't answer on the events. I do know Erica is in Nashville right now, working with different promoters to bring shows here, but as far as the events go, I cannot speak on them. That's a question for Erica.
Erica knows where we've been coming from since January and I'm not, I'm not just talking Erica, I'm talking the Hard Rock. And we were promised that we were gonna have many events coming. And one of the promises that we got from Spectra is that they have all these connections going around, you know, going around to different events, and how come we can't be part of that? So I want to know what's going on. I'm very frustrated at this point.
And I apologize, I cannot answer that, that's, so I'm gonna have to get back to you, ask somebody else to answer, but I cannot answer that.
I, and you should be able to.
Councilmember Capron, Spectra Corporate will be in town for a presentation, I believe it's on October?
22nd?
22nd.
I know, I'm gonna be meeting with them, so they'll hear.
And we'll have another quarterly update at some point.
And we haven't had any updates either, that's another problem I have.
What date is Spectra gonna be in?
October 5th.
That's a Friday, this Friday. Are we involved in that?
No, it's the 11th.
Are you talking about a Monday?
November 5th, excuse me.
November 5th?
I thought.
They're having, a different gentleman's coming to town and meeting individually with a couple of council members.
I'm just frustrated because I'll tell you, we put Spectra in, in January, and I haven't seen anything. We haven't got any reports, we haven't gotten anything back, and we've asked for it and no one's, no one's been there for us, so. I don't want to hear excuses anymore either. I want to, well, it's the truth, I want.
What do you got, though?
I have, I don't know what I have, Jim Frankie with General Manager with the Hard Rock. We have met with Erica a couple times, we have a meeting with Spectra, I thought it was October, I was looking in the, in my notes.
I thought it was October 11th, right?
Yeah. Let me get the check here.
That's Thursday.
We're going into almost the year, there's no excuse.
It's the October 11th at 1 o'clock is when it's scheduled.
Right.
And we were, we were meeting with Erica and of course, we lost our Director of Entertainment, so that set us back a little bit and, you know, we're continuing to push forward with the discussions. But we'll continue to have those discussions and follow up as appropriate.
I'm okay with all that, I just haven't, you know, talk is cheap, I want to see some action here, you know, I, everybody wants money from the city, but you know, we want something bad. That's what it's all about, we'll work with you, I have no problem with that. I have no problem with doing the parking ramp, but I do have a problem when we don't have any events that are gonna support it. That's the bottom line here for me. So, and Erica's been, I understand, she's out of town, she's looking for stuff, she's been out of town for a year, you know, as far as I can see, and where's, where's our events coming? And how come Spectra has, has this, you know, started from Lincoln to Sioux Falls, they have all these events that are going on there, we're supposed to be a stop supposedly, I haven't seen one, one thing, one thing here in Sioux City, not one thing. So, I'm sorry, but that's, I'm frustrated.
Well, I'd like to see what they're doing, at least Kinsopf, I'm not, no fan of theirs either, but at least they served a nice dinner and got it done quickly at the Chamber Dinner and they've given us financial statements, but it would appear that we have to be bleeding a lot of red ink down there. If you don't have any shows, and the one you had was a train wreck, we can all assume that it was, it's unfortunate, you know, I can buy the first month because you're switching accounting services, but come on now, we're nine months into this process, somebody's got to figure out how to give us a P and L down there or you're not, you're not the gurus that you sold us on being.
Gotcha.
And I know we're killing the messenger here, but take the message back, would you?
Yep, will do.
Thank you. Thank you. I hope when this opens, from my vantage point, that we figure out a way to have tickets on the northwest corner of that Tyson Event Center, or this is wasted money.
I agree.
And, and I've heard all the excuses about that too, why you can't do it, but I am not buying any of them. With today's internet, we can't go wireless, we're afraid to go wireless when we are wireless everywhere in the world right now and all that sort of stuff, but it will make no sense to have this entrance because you're gonna find the majority of the people will go in that entrance rather than the front entrance once this ramp is built, I can guarantee you that. So I hope we figure out a way to do that.
We will. Or even up those stairs too, on that west side.
Yeah, but at least if you have it on the ground floor.
Yeah, you don't have to be concerned, I know, I agree.
Then people that are handicapped won't have access. One upstairs won't do them any good, they're still gonna have to go all the way around the building, which to me is, would be counterproductive, so. Anyone else to hear?
What's the meeting on the 11th of this month?
John, is it John Page?
John Page.
John Page, who's a corporate executive from Spectra in Philadelphia, will be coming to town, meeting with myself, meeting with Rhonda, and I believe, meeting with the mayor. That's on October 11th. On November 5th, Spectra Corporate and local staff will be here for just their update to council.
And that'll have all the numbers in it that were?
We would hope so, yes.
Capron seems to be frustrated, so your frustration's more to Spectra than?
No, there was a deal that, that.
Anything else?
When you voted to privatize this, and I'm not taking shots, I didn't vote, because I couldn't, but part of the deal was that, that Hard Rock would work to do a winter concert series in the Tyson Event Center. Well, if you're really gonna do a winter concert series, you would have already booked those concerts, so we're not gonna have a winter concert series, that's the problem. And I don't know whose fault that is, but it hasn't happened.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Mayor, Council, Dave Carney, Public Works Director, Justin Potorf with me, he's the project engineer for this project. Two weeks ago, Mr. Heath Weber came in and had some concerns about the project and we were asked to relook at the lane configuration that was talked about last September, and we went back and looked at the three-lane versus four-lane, we met with the Morningside Commercial Club this past week. We are saying we should proceed with the direction that we were given back in September of 2017 and just go through with the four-lane configuration and if, you wanna put the presentation up or? What's up there right now is what is currently designed for a four-lane with parking on the south side. This, this is the area that was reconstructed last year, the plans, these are the plans that are done by McClure, and then getting into this year's reconstruction where the plans were done by DGR, continuing that four-lane section and parking on the south side of the roadway. A little bit of parking as you get close to the intersection, kind of shifts over in front of the Sunkist Bakery and Come and Go as you get down to the, and the, by Henry Street, and then the intersection at Lakeport and Morningside Ave-, South Lakeport and Morningside Avenue. The proposed four-lane section, or three-lane section, excuse me, would have had parking on both sides through, through most of it, with a one lane in each direction with a center turn lane. This is still the, not quite the plan, this is with parallel parking, I know there was a lot of anxiety about if we were gonna bring up the reverse angle parking again, though we had DGR do a layout with the parallel parking in there. And it would, you know, it would be a three-lane to four-lane, like we engineering said before, three-lane definitely, past experience throughout the state is a safer road section. We're not saying that four-lane is unsafe, we're just saying that three-lane would reduce the number of crashes that we are currently experiencing in this corridor. But at this point, I think we've gone down this road to four-lane and we need to stick with the four-lane road configuration. I just had some crash, the crash data, if anyone wanted, in case that got brought up and someone wanted to talk, talk to it, I don't know if there's any questions at this point.
I'll make a comment. I think it's kind of crazy to think that we can go backwards after having this plan going forward for, for a year. You know, to come to the council and say, all of a sudden, we want to change everything up, that's not, that's not good. It's gonna cost money, it's gonna cost time, and we want to get the Morningside Avenue done. So it's kind of hard to get it done if you keep going backwards. We can't do that.
We are definitely at a point where we were, we'd start to see project delays if we wanted to bring it back.
Right.
And in, and in all fairness, I think, I don't want you to direct that necessarily at engineering, I think that a citizen came forward, we were saying maybe we could come to an agreement or at least have a meeting with everyone, bring everyone to the table again, to make sure that we were making the right decision. And, and I, I am just as guilty of that as well, I was hoping that we could all come together and address different concerns and that maybe should have been done more thoroughly last September. So I understand your concern with that, that you thought we made the decision and should be going forward. Personally, I will say that I wish last September I had looked into it much more thoroughly and held meetings and different things the way that, that we did maybe this over this last week, because I do believe that there was an opportunity for people to come together and really maybe address concerns on both sides of the issue, I think that.
But there was meetings, that's the thing.
Yeah, but here's my, I'll tell you my problem, I've conveyed this today. I said from the beginning, I would like three lanes from Niklato to the, to the east, and then all of a sudden, it's the dumbest idea ever. Okay, I get it, it's a dumb idea now, because we have this world-renowned engineer, I hope he's in the audience, because I don't know what a world-renowned engineer looks like, I would like to meet one. You know, if it was a dumb idea that night, it should have been said, you know what, it's a dumb idea, Bob. Should have been said two weeks ago, this is a dumb idea, Bob, no traffic engineer will agree with you. But it wasn't said and that is disappointing, so I don't think you can change things now, but that's the way it is, so.
I have an office right there where the new section is.
State your name and address.
Jeff Ayler's from Allstate.
Okay, thank you.
And so my office is right there where this next section of construction is. I guess, so you're saying that it's gonna go from, we're not gonna do three, three lanes, you're gonna go to four lanes?
Just they, it's gonna be the road section that.
Well, I mean, I've been there for a long time. My biggest problem with four lanes is that they turn into the parking lot at Walgreens Crest Street, there's a crasher like every month, people turning across in four lanes, or those two other lanes, and that intersection, and there's a wreck out there. It's a busy intersection. I mean, even past the intersection, it's busy out there at between 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock. Somebody lets somebody into opening in there and they go through and somebody in the second lane, a traffic hits them. So it happens a lot, okay? That's why I always thought a turn lane would be better, because.
Actually, we are gonna make a small adjustment going into Henry Street, there will be a turn lane at Henry Street, if you want to look up at the.
Is that where, is that where the Walgreens is?
Yes.
That's not gonna solve what he's talking about, he's talking about people turning across the lanes of traffic.
That's right.
Coming out of Walgreens.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, they, somebody lets them in, stops and lets them go and they go and somebody creams them from the going east on the intersection, going to the parking lot all the time. So that's why I gotta, there's four lanes there now and there's always wrecks right there, so.
That's why we initially came with a three-lane recommendation.
Yeah, I, I think that's the way you gotta, it's gotta be, because you have the turn lane, they're in the turn lane, all they have to worry about is one lane of traffic crossing into Walgreens. So, I guess my other question is, is I want to make sure, what, I, they're, I know they're really behind, we were supposed to, this was to start, I think, before now, that, on our section there, any idea when this is gonna happen? I'm hoping not in the middle of winter.
Justin Potorf, Civil Engineer. Currently, we are on stage one B of construction. Whatever we do, open up this fall, will get paved back before winter, we will have it closed back up. Construction will not be completed on this project this year.
No, that's, but I'm saying, if you start this in November, after this first part is done, then we're gonna be in the worst part of the year to be doing construction there. And you gotta understand something, this is where my office is, you're gonna close my sidewalk to my office, people are gonna have to come in the back door, we're using an alley for our parking as it is right now, but you do that and it's gonna make a mess behind there, because nobody can get to Come and Go, they can't get to, and to our offices, you got people racing through that alley, which is not very, not very good anyway. You'll have city trucks in there, I mean, come up to my office, come up to that area when it first, the snow flies and see how good that alley is back there. And that's the only thing that myself, Peterson's, Sunkist, a little bit, I guess, but the three of us right there are gonna have a big problem getting our customers in and out of our businesses. I know it's gonna be, it's gonna be a headache no matter what, I get that. But if you're, if it's not done in two months, it goes out to April, we're, you know, five or six months into this project because we're in the middle of wintertime. I think you need to delay it until, till, you know, February or March. Then you got a little better weather, you're not, you know, I'm concerned about the alley stuff.
The construction, the next phase is something we've already been in discussions with the contractor about whether or not it happens this year.
Okay, so what does that mean?
We're.
You're gonna, you're gonna do it, so.
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't mean that we're gonna proceed until we, see when they get their, this phased up.
It's just gonna be really hard to get our customers in and out of there. Jeff, what's your address again? 4617 Morningside Avenue.
Peterson's there.
Right next to Peterson's, and Come and Go's on the other side of me.
Yeah.
So their access can be, you're gonna have people come in, in and out of that alley alley all day and night to go to Come and Go. And it's not, it's not great now, but it's, there is, it's not terrible, but it's going to get worse. Once our section closes, it's going to be bad. And if we have to, I mean, what are you guys projecting for a timeframe for the construction to be done from?
It's all weather dependent, that's the issue.
But if it were ideal conditions-
How many working days?
Where you have working days?
If you remember, that's all. If you don't recall, you don't recall.
I don't recall.
Okay. I kind of remember hearing sixty to ninety days, but I-
Sixty-five, sixty-five working days was the total projected.
Okay. You know, I can live with that. And the other guys around us can live with that too, but-
But the working days are, we can only charge them working days that they can work on the-
I understand, but if it's not open, I mean, we've had a couple of years in the last ten years where we've had snow on the ground from beginning of December until March, you know? So now we're talking no working days. And, and I got my whole front end of my building tore apart. I really like to see you move this to March before you start, March first. Then you got a chance to get these in pretty quickly, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Rick Ray, as owner of Sunkist Bakery. I've talked to Justin a few times, my concerns. This project was supposed to be done up to the lights the first weekend in September. Knife River has not done their work, you know, on the contract, it says they're supposed to work from seven AM to seven PM, most of the times. They're gone, you know, Fridays, they don't work, they're gone by three o'clock. For a good example, today, after the rain was done, I drove to my other property on Hamilton to let my electrician in, drove by West Seventh. All that crew was working, but in front of my bakery, not a soul. You know, that's a big difference with two different companies. The last, the first phase of that project on Morningside, I'm sure it was done by now, you know, and they had more complications with, you know, gas main break, you know, they had to evacuate a few people there, you know, hitting power lines. Really, there was, when RP left and Vanderpool left, it sat with nobody doing anything to that street for two weeks. There was nice and sunny, you know, I have pictures, I have videos, and nobody, you know, was around. I'm sure Knife River had another project to do in another town, or, you know, but I think the city needs to get on, you know, the contractors. I'm down eighteen thousand dollars in business. I'm a small company. I'm not getting any money from another surplus, another store yet. The big businesses, Come and Go, Walgreens, they're big, large companies, you know? The little thing that you guys are going to do for Walgreens, just narrow their entrance, that's not that big of a deal. That's where, like he said, that's where all the accidents happen. You know, when the, they tried to close one of my entrances that had been there forever, there's really not been any accidents there. The main accidents happened to that area that you guys are trying to make a four lane, and that's going to be a nightmare, you know? Narrowing that entrance, it's not going to make that big of a difference, in my opinion. So my suggestion is that we need to do something, because I cannot keep losing money this way. You know, that's a lot of money. And they're just, you know, I see West Seventh, they're working their butts off today, you know? Our street, not a soul. So that's my concern, that we need to push. And if they, if you guys don't have a projection on what's going to happen, now, if you guys decide to move here, so is that road going to continue to be closed?
No, we'll make sure the road's open over the winter time.
Will be open, you know? So actually, that would give us, you know, some time to make some of my money back, you know? So otherwise, I'm going to be hurting for the, you know, till this project is going to get delayed. If it's already delayed, when, if you look at the weather and everything, and nobody's been around, when it's sunny, then it's going to keep going this way and this way. When two contractors, Vanderpool and, is that the name Vanderpool?
Vanderpool.
Yep, and RP, they get their job done, you know? And then, now, one more thing, Knife River really doesn't care about what they do, they crushed my sidewalk, and I got all white X's that just got put on this week. So now I'm responsible, you know, to go fight Knife River, because I have pictures, you know, they put all their equipment, they drove all their skin loaders to put all the pipes, the giant, you know, sewer pipes. So now I'm going to have to pay lots of money to get all my sidewalk done. You know, so who do I contact about that?
Why would Knife River have done that? They don't do pipe.
No, because they had, the beginning of the project, they had the pipes that went into that first street, first, the first phase.
That wouldn't be Knife River.
It'd be their sub.
Be their sub.
They what?
It'd be their sub.
Subcontractor.
Yep.
We'll track that down.
They're subcontracting.
Can you forward those photos?
Yes. So my question is, if you could, you know, and the businesses there that we're getting hurt the most, we should have, you know, meetings with, you know, on, you know, what's happening. We don't know what's going on from week to week, or when is the new projection going to be done?
And what is the timeline, gentlemen? I mean, do we feel like they're, how far behind are they? This is, I guess I get frustrated, because I do live in that area, and I see, and we went through this with Glen Avenue, you know what I mean, Dave? We had this exact same conversation over Knife River and that project. Do we feel like they're giving the attention that it's there, or that, hey, they have these amount of working days, so as long as they get it done?
You've had a lot of rain, I'm not defending Knife River, I thought they should have been able to pour a month ago, I went out and bought some donuts, and I thought they should have been able to pour a month ago, they had trimmed at that point, but when you get rain, you lose two days, for every day you get a rain, you're going to lose a day, that's the unfortunate part, because you got to reset up. I'm not trying to defend them, I'm just telling you it's not-
Yeah, but you know, like, West Seventh, you've got other companies working.
I agree, I agree.
And that's why I'm just asking, I'm not out there, so I don't know what you guys see or have seen.
Three to four weeks, probably. Well, they're more than likely three to four weeks behind the last schedule I have, and that'll be a discussion that we have tomorrow onsite, that we were going to have-
More important question for you is, when are you opening that Hamilton Boulevard? Because, you know, I'm tired of driving by and seeing the brown paper bags.
That's another thing, as soon as Sulan Hill gets over there to do their final inspection, so, there you go, somebody else's person.
All right, well, I get tired of driving by seeing that brown paper from the windows, let's get that-
But what's, Justin, what was the start date for this project?
I'd have to go back and look at that.
It was May, wasn't it? I know we had to beat the parade, didn't we? May first?
Yep, in the middle of May, and it was supposed to be completed the first week of September up to the intersection.
Let's make sure that before we give the go ahead to start this phase, that we talk.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd all appreciate that, some communication, because that just hasn't happened. You know, Heath Weber, forty-four eleven Morningside Avenue, I'm back again, perhaps a thorn in your side, but I hope someone with some, maybe some foresight and a little bit of innovation. Alex Waters organized a meeting with the commercial club and the engineers that afforded us really no solutions, other than, I think, continuing to, to build up fears for business owners on the, on the west end of Morningside Avenue, and perhaps increasing my frustrations. You know, there were no great solutions that were brought forward, just, we can't do this. And I get that moving traffic off of Morningside Avenue in a, in a right turn only is not feasible. However, my friends, the Drillings, who are concerned about their business, and, but were offered zero solutions for the back end driving, and were concerned about the five parking spaces that they have in front of their business, which is extremely valid. The concerns that we talked about many times were how to load, and how they were going to get equipment and deliveries in and out of those businesses. Those are valid fears. They need to get those things in and out, and oftentimes, it's employees who are, who are moving things in and out. I think more than anything, that traffic calming those three lanes are essential to keep drivers safe, to keep customers safe as they're running across from four lanes of traffic from the, from the library parking lot, or, or perhaps they are, they are double parked, who knows what things happen. The most frustrating thing for me as a resident has been the lack of communication. And I will say, Knife River worked very, very late into the night, two Fridays ago, and also last Thursday. I was up at, they cut concrete until two in the morning last Friday, and then last Thursday until three fifteen is how late I was up, just boop, 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 boop. And I was told that the concrete would absolutely break up if they didn't cut it at that time. I have a hard time believing that, but, I mean, certainly not within their deal of seven AM to seven PM. All together, and Councilwoman Capebrun, I assure you that I, I share your frustrations with keeping things behind, and it's frustrating for you, I know. It's equally frustrating for me as a resident there to know that we are taking not necessarily a picture of foresight for the city, and to move forward that beautiful idea of what Morningside Avenue could be, and leaving it as a drag strip, and keeping those businesses maybe from even growing in a way that we don't know. You know, I said to some of my colleagues today that there were times when my parents did things for me that I didn't love, but they were like, this is better for you, and you don't necessarily get it, son. And sometimes we might have to do that as a city. I grew up in Sioux Falls, and they have made multiple decisions that people have not necessarily thought were great ideas, that turned out to be fantastically brilliant ideas. They have streets that are full of beautiful plantings and that have calmed traffic downtown. I can think of an area very similar to ours, with old, beautiful buildings that have been refurbished into restaurants and, and businesses. There are hair salons, there are insurance agencies, there are framing places, there's a bakery, there's a restaurant, there's tons of, of living there, and there is parking on both sides, a turn lane, and one lane each way. The speed limit happens to be twenty-five miles an hour, and there are plantings all over, it's beautiful, the lines are buried there as well. Council Bluffs, a very similar kind of economic station that we have, has spent time making major thoroughfares, major areas, beautiful so that the community loves it, you know? Councilman Waters was talking about redoing the library, and that the library is getting redone, that that, the Peters Park area, the parking lot, will also be potentially reworked in a couple of years, and what a neat opportunity for us to, with some foresight, look ahead and say-
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, though, we're going to adhere to the three minute rule, so if you can-
You've got a great way to, to make some changes for, for that corridor. I, I am sad that the, that the engineers brought us no great new ideas, it was just, this is the way it's going to be, or this is what it could be, but that'll put us behind, and we don't want to do that.
Thank you.
It's frustrating.
I'm, I'm Bill Drilling with Drilling Pharmacy at forty-ten Morningside Avenue, and Marilyn Wheelock with Wheelock Dentistry had to leave, but we do have a lot of merchants represented here. And I would like to first start by thanking Alex Waters and Justin and Gordon and, and Dave and Mr. Weber for coming and meeting all together and trying to figure this out. And going from the city's data, that since the time Mr. Weber bought his house until now, the traffic has not significantly changed. Was it the eighty-fifth percent of the percentile of traffic is going thirty-five miles an hour, or slower?
Or slower, yeah.
So, am I correct in saying?
Yes.
From our meeting with the merchants, in our meeting, we all came to the consensus that we wanted a left of four lane road. And every one of us is very much committed to the neighborhood, wanting to make a difference and wanting to improve the area, and we're very fortunate, we have a very nice restaurant that went in beside us, and we have what I consider a true entrepreneur, an Ashley Prince, she has a Pickle Palais a couple doors over. I guess, when you're a small merchant, a small businessman, you get a little paranoid, and I see this as a barrier to, to people being able to enter my pharmacy, and they will, if you, if you were three lane this, you're going to have continuous traffic going in each direction, it's going to be hard for people to pull out of the parallel parking in front of the pharmacy, it's going to be hard for the residents backing out of the driveways on down on Morningside Avenue. You know, like we have said, that really the only place we can get orders, deliveries, is to the front of the store. And I know that double parking technically is illegal, and I feel bad, because we're inconveniencing people. When we have the semis, I take off my pharmacy jacket and I run out, and I try to help unload the trucks so they can get out of there. For us, there's just no other way to do it.
I'm going to need you to wind it down too, if you would, your three minutes are up, okay?
In the winter, we have, and thank goodness, they put the snow in the middle of the street instead of on our sidewalks, but then you're down to a two lane street with the snow in the middle of the, of the street, and, you know, I've got to hand it to the city workers, I think they do an amazing job, but it's in the middle of the street for several days before they can get it moved out. And you, at that point, you have a two lane street, you don't have a turning lane, somebody's going to try to turn left onto South St. Avon, I can't imagine how far the traffic is going to-
I'm going to ask you to wind it up, please.
Is going to back up. And I'd just like to say, we're there at Drilling Pharmacy, because we want to make a difference in the community, and I'd like to thank you guys for listening to me and letting me express my concerns to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Leete Schulenberger, I live on, well, half a block off of Morningside Avenue. I work at two different places right on Morningside Avenue. I'm at the Hair Parlour, which is forty-twelve Morningside Avenue, one, two doors over, one drawer from Drilling, and I also work at the new consignment store, KZ Auctions and Consignments. Thank you very much, guys, for having the meetings with us, we really appreciate it. It seems that the merchants on both ends of this project are divided. Those of us on the west end embrace and want the four lane with the parallel parking, and I understand you're doing that, thank you. I didn't know until Mr. Insurance Man here, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, spoke for the people on the east end. I had never heard that side of it before. But I have polled, I started, when I thought we were going to revisit this and maybe change it, I had started a petition that I'm now going to call a poll, and I talked to a lot of my clients, and on the west end of this project, the consensus is unanimous that the four lanes with the parallel is the best thing to do for that area. I wish there was a way to balance it with what the folks want on the other end, I don't know how that could be done. But thank you for your consideration, guys, and thank you for working with us, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would, I would just say, I wanted to finish. I was talking earlier, and I didn't really feel like I got to finish, so I just wanted to finish kind of where I was at. Because we did have a long meeting, Drillings and the Morningside Commercial Club, that they came to, or they feel, but I also understand Mr. Weber's, and for me, it was a real struggle thinking like, gosh, I got onto this city council because, because I was a thirty-two year old, or a thirty year old that was just sick of things the way that they're always done, and, and wanting to make change and saying, gosh, we got to be thinking fifty years down the road, we got to be thinking about what's going to be next and what's going to draw in new people, because we have a people problem. We do not have enough young people, we do not have enough people to fill the jobs that we have. And so we have to think in innovative ways, and for me, I think about Morningside Avenue, I'm excited about the new library and what that potentially could do, and Ashley brought up a great point at that meeting that we had about, gosh, I drove around the library, I drove around the space more than I would care to admit to, and there's a lot of great area there that we could really make something. And I think, I think the whole, I mean, and you look at, if you go to a three lane configuration, we talked about it, the possibility of bike trails through that whole lane- about it, the possibility of bike trails through that whole lane, you could put bike lanes on Morningside Avenue that would connect to Transit Avenue where they actually have a bike lane, or not a bike lane, a bike path, that would connect to the riverfront. How great would that be for the people that live in the Morningside area? I think that would be great, and that's something that young people want. You can read all the research and all the articles about it. We have to start being a community that thinks that way. And I know, I know that, of course, your customers that you poll are gonna say that. I mean, and that's just maybe, maybe me just thinking that, but I, if you're gonna ask me what I would want it, I'm gonna say what it is, because that's the most comfortable to me. That's what I know, and I can't imagine it being anything else. But when I think about Morningside Avenue, I think about a tree-lined avenue with bike lanes where it's friendly, it's a neighborhood, and yet, and people are walking to the businesses, the great shops, like the ones that we have down there, and not having to, because I see the workers playing Frogger to go over to the mail chute, or to go to their parking space. It's not what I would envision for that stretch of road. And I'm really, Rhonda, I understand your frustration with, "We made this decision, let's move on," and I completely get that. I know that last September, I made the wrong decision. I should've just talked more with the group. I think if we could've discussed more, there is an opportunity, but, you know, the engineering department, we talked, too. And I think as soon as people heard reverse angle parking, I know another crazy idea, people get upset and dig in their heels, so... I just, I know that moving forward, we will see what the conversation happens moving forward. I hope there's an opportunity. We're having an active transportation committee come together to make recommendations, and I hope that we have that chance to talk about bike lanes and what the future for that area could be, when we have a new renovated library there, and a whole area where I hope a lot of families want to be, that's not on a dangerous stretch of road. That's all I gotta say.
Okay, so here's my question. What are we doing? Are we moving forward?
I would say at this point, we're moving forward with the current configuration that was laid out, unless I'm directed to bring things back. But I would say at this point, we should move forward. That's our recommendation.
When was the first public meeting? Do you remember for this, for the Morningside Avenue reconstruction project?
It would've been, it would've been prior to the meeting we had here in September of 2017.
August.
August of 17?
August of 17.
In the library?
No, that was in, that was prior to construction. We had another, we had other public meetings prior to that.
Yeah, we did, because we were, I remember there was an issue with, is that a tobacco hut that's there?
Yeah.
In the drive-thru and all that?
That was at the meeting-
We had those a year and a half ago.
No, that was at the meeting that was, oh, in the early, early spring, just before it went to construction, where they, where we talked about construction phasing and the elimination of some driveways. That was later. That was after the decision to go to four lane. There was meetings prior to that, back in August, in September of 17. But the one at the library was February, I think. It was, yeah, I'd have to go back and look in the calendar, but it was just, it was after we had made the decision to go to four lane, but prior to us letting the project.
Well, I thought it was probably before that, but the issue that keeps hitting me is I remember a coordinate with the Morningside Parade-
Yep.
-and Morningside Days, and to make sure the avenue was not closed down so they could do their parade. Pardon me?
That was like early in the spring.
Yeah, and that would've been May of 17.
No, that was like May of, that was, no, that was like-
Early this year.
Like February or March of this year.
Not one time from the first public meeting do I recall until Mr. Heath brought it up, that we were debating-
Problem is-
-three-lane and four-lane.
Let me just say the problem here. September that they're talking about, when the decision was made to go to four lane, the majority of us, at least I thought-
Yep.
-we were only talking in that corridor of the commercial area, because they came up with that back-end parking, and we said, "No." And so shame on us. They heard what they wanted to hear, and that was, "No, you're not gonna do back-end parking, it's gonna be four lane." And they heard that all the way through. It never came up, is there a way you can transition it? They, from that day forward, I'm not taking shots, it's reality. They moved with four lanes. That isn't what I thought we were, I just thought we were getting rid of the back-end parking that nobody wanted, but that's not what they took it as.
And I will say that that unfortunately convoluted the whole issue. I think if we would've come with a three-lane discussion and had parallel parking, the conversation probably would've been much different than it was in September 11th of last year. But unfortunately, we were trying to do, we had met with the commercial club and talked about issues they had as far as loading and unloading, and number of parking spaces, and that putting parallel parking on the north side really didn't help them, because the library didn't really use their lots and all that.
That was right after Gordon got to town, wasn't it?
This was before, no, this is-
One of your first meetings?
This is before Gordon came to town.
This was before.
Yeah, and-
We met the Morningside Club, though.
Yeah.
Up above the-
And that was after the decision had already been made to go to four lane, and we were, and Bob's right, we took it, you know, it was four lane, it was gonna be four, but we would not have been, even then, we would've looked at the transition, and there was no way to make a good transition from four to three.
That's not true. You can, you can transition by narrowing your street. That does work. I don't care what your Snyder guy says. He's the same guy that comes up with roundabouts and everything else that only you want to believe is good. The rest of us don't want to believe a roundabout is good. I know you tell me all the great things about it, but we're in Iowa, and people don't know how to drive a roundabout, Dave. I mean, that's reality. I'm just telling you. So, you can, you could've transitioned. No, if you keep the street width the same, I agree 100%, but we could've narrowed that street down. It happens all over America.
The benefits you would see on the, through the residential neighborhood net would be offset by the crashes you would see at the merge.
They're gonna be worse than what we have now. Give me a break.
There's only-
You know what? Save that for some Snyder engineering guy, not for me.
If you want to look at the crashes in the neighborhood area, there's eight crashes over a five-year period. It's the lowest crash section of the entire roadway. The major crashes are-
You're gonna make it even worse down by Walgreens with what you're doing, because this gentleman's 100% right. When I try to turn like three lanes of traffic, I'm gonna get T-boned, or when I'm trying to get out of Walgreens, I've done it. People stop, they wave you out, they don't look to see if another car's coming, so you pull out thinking that they're looking for you. They're not.
They're not.
They're just letting you out. So you get hit as you come out. I've done it, I probably have had that, people waved me out five times in the last year out of that Walgreens. I avoid it with the plague.
Yeah. Don't go just because somebody's waving at you. I'm not going there to buy drugs, by the way. Anyway, it's just, we're not gonna get any better down here, and there's, it's just one of those stretches of the road. Unfortunately, Alex, we'd like to make it nice, but I don't know how you do it.
I think there are opportunities, but I think we'll, I think there are opportunities, and I hope we revisit this with active transportation or whatever ends up happening. But I really, I agree that, I'm being told by engineering that if we want more delays, it would be even longer to open up, and so I understand that. It's just paint, we can revisit that.
And I'm not sure that we maybe had the full conversation we should've had in the beginning, but certainly one of my priorities would be, when we make decisions like this, what is the safest way to do it? If we cut into the property, or the property damage accidents, traffic accidents, then that's gotta be better for everybody. Less property damage, less injury, everything.
The best way to do that, Pete, is put a median at the Walgreens. Make 'em go, put a median. Now, don't let 'em turn across, and if they tell me that's how you stop crashes, that's the way to do it. Put a median there, that'll solve the problem. And who?
It's gonna-
Make 'em go to, make 'em go on Lakeport to come in if they're out.
They can. There's a median on Lakeport.
No, they can, they can go-
They go down to the corner and come back.
Right.
I mean, turn in from the south, the next block south, what is that, Sixth Avenue? No, Fourth Avenue. Fourth Avenue. Right behind.
You can't get there. I mean, you have to go in the north entrance. If you're coming north on Lakeport, you can only get into Walgreens.
Coming north, that's right. I agree.
All Lakeport.
That's what I said, those medians are a great thing. Those medians are great. They limit people's ability to do business.
There isn't a way to turn on Fourth Avenue and come up from-
Yes, sir. Yeah. I didn't say that. You'd have to turn right in, is what I said, but anyway, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
You can turn off of Fourth Avenue, can't you?
No.
No, you can't to get into Walgreens?
No.
Median goes further down than that.
Ashley Prince, I'm the owner of Pickled Palate. We're at 4014 Morningside Avenue, and I'm also a member of the Morningside Commercial Club. I encourage other businesses along the entire strip of Morningside Avenue to please join us at our meetings, because we are there not to just help each other's businesses along that strip, but our entire community in Morningside entirely. Regardless of this outcome, whether we go three or four, I made my decision clear. I'm split. I see both aspects from either side. We could slow down traffic, but then it could also hinder our parking. So as far as that goes, I am entirely split. My ask to the council is, even though we kind of have this standstill on beautification, and I understand Heath's concerns with wanting to make his property and Morningside of more value, I see how our community and in Morningside, sometimes the neighborhoods are getting very, very sketchy, and I don't want to see our community turning into something in Sioux City that we do not want. So my ask is that the council very, very seriously takes into consideration the changes that are being made at the library. You said that you took a look around the green space, and I appreciate your interest in that. There is a lot of good green space to work with, and that would also aid in our parking situation if our customers and people along that strip felt more comfortable parking at that library. We're so quick and eager to slap down some cement, but I want to make it very clear that we're interested, and I know that being a part of the Morningside Commercial Club, I myself will eagerly be at those meetings that, where you guys are making decisions, and I know they will as well. We host a lot of events over there, and if you haven't heard of them, we do Party in the Park, where we host a car show, kids' events, bringing people from the community. And we also do a new event, Junk in the Park, and that's gonna be a vendor-type of fair. So we really ask that you guys take a look at that and consider that, because we on our end, we're doing this just out of the benefit of the community. We're not hoping to try and make a dollar off at all times. We want to do that to better Morningside, so please take that.
Do all, with all the leftover pork that you didn't serve at the car show.
Oh, I don't know. Drillings? No, I don't think it was ever picked up, so, thank you.
Can I ask this one more question?
Yep.
I did three businesses-
You gotta come to the mic. You gotta come to the mic, okay?
Jeff Avery. My, our biggest concern of these street businesses, the street isn't as big a deal. I mean, we still would like to not have a lot of wrecks down there, but I am more concerned about you guys starting this project in October or November. It's-
We're gonna work with you on that.
And it's, it's gonna be a mess.
We won't let them open it up if we don't think they can get it done.
Okay, that's, that's all I've asked.
Yeah, we'll monitor that. Anyone else?
I just want to say, I agree with Mr. Drilling's comments. I'm glad you came up and spoke to us, but I agree with what you were summarizing. And my recollection is the merchants were well-represented and clearly stated what they did want. You can always look back and maybe make improvements or make some changes, but, and I'm all in favor of being open-minded about that, but I think the council's being a little harsh on what we did, because it was well-thought-out. We did have meetings, and we did have public, we did have input from the merchants. And I agree with your comments about small businesses. This community really, really needs to support small businesses as well as the larger companies that we better, but I think we're being a little harsh on ourselves, that we made a decision without having a good input from everyone. So thank you for your comments, Mr. Drilling.
Well, let me just say this. I am a small business owner, and I am on that corridor. And I don't like four lanes in front of my business. I'll just tell you that. I don't.
I understand.
It's that traffic there, when I go out at night and I park across the street, because I don't want my customers to not be able to park there, and I don't want to park in our parking lot. It's tough to get across that street. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's not a utopia having four lanes there, trust me.
I understand what you're saying, Mayor.
And I want you to understand, I understand small businesses better than any of them. I own enough of them that I get it. I get what it takes to make one work, so. And I also understand what a little beautification on a street project is, you know? We all spent a lot of money to put this colored concrete down that, as far as I'm concerned, the city hoisted on us, because it's not, it's slipperier than concrete when it's, you put, you put salt on it and things like that. So sometimes, we try to do a little bit more to make it look nicer, and it backfires on us, too, David, so. Anyone else to be heard? Any citizen concerned?
I think it's also important to protect our residents. It's important to protect small businesses. It's also important to protect our residents.
I agree with you.
I think it's, it's-
I agree with you.
It's ridiculous that that crash rate is what it is, and that 85% of those cars are traveling at 35 miles an hour or less. That also means that there are 15% who aren't. That's 2,000 to 2,500 cars a day that are traveling faster than 35 miles an hour. That's a lot of cars.
Let me tell you what, I would gladly have 85% of people's traveling speed limit on my street right now. Not just right now, any day of the week. And right now, I've got all of outer belt traffic.
But the speed limit is 30. I mean, you know, so if 85% are traveling 35 miles an hour-
It's only 35 at mine. I bet the average speed if they check it, I bet it's 45 miles an hour.
Without a doubt.
So, that, I think 85% is amazing that they're only going that fast.
In front of your home you're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's a lot faster than that.
I agree. So that's why I said, I'd be happy with 85%. Anyone else? Any other citizens to be heard on any other item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing none, we'll go to Mr. Greckin. No, I have, I don't have anything else.
Nope, pass.
Oh, gosh, we're going quick. Dan, can you go?
A joint meeting tomorrow at noon.
We do.
We do.
Historic preservation.
Downtown, or downstairs in the basement. Just want to thank the mayor and the council for their support, while I took a little vacation last week.
A little vacation? He was gone for a while, boys and girls. And tell him where he went. He went to-
He was much needed.
He went to Rome and met the Pope, or got close to him, anyway. So, we're, we're feeling the love up here right now. He brought me back to Halo, too. I'm really excited about it.
One thing-
I have nothing.
Nothing further. One thing I did find on my calendar that I just would've brought to the attention is, it's the celebrating community projects phase for Rudy and Floralee down there at the Martin Luther King Center. That's on Thursday at 4:00 p.m.
Oh, I'm glad to see that.
Thursday at 4:00 p.m., so they certainly have done a lot for this community, and so I think it's, it's great that we're gonna be able to-
Where is it at? At the Transit?
Yep, down at the Transit Center. Be able to showcase them in those manners. So, I would encourage everyone to be there.
Where is it at, 4?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Alex and I and Pete had the opportunity to go to the Blue Mass on Sunday, or Saturday morning. It was very nice. And then I got the opportunity to go catch a little cold out to Olson Stadium, or Robert Stadium, I still call it, kind of old-school. And I got to judge some great bands. I was the star judge-
Terrific.
-for this, whatever, I don't know.
Celebrity judge.
Celebrity judge.
Yeah.
And I got to pick six different categories of bands, and it was, not having been to Star Fest since my daughters were in the band at North High, it's been a little while, but I was glad to be back. It was a-
You tapped into your musical acumen.
And I was an artsy guy, you know that.
And it was cold, too, wasn't it?
They let me sit up in a-
Oh, I'm a-
-up in a box, but they weren't heated, but nevertheless, it was a lot better than being out in the cold and in the rain, so.
Capron?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.